All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our September 7th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. If there are no changes that need to be made, I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve the minutes as submitted.
I've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four with one abstention. If you'll put me down as an abstention since I was not at the meeting.
Yeah, they won't let me do it either.
You don't have to. You can approve the minute. Well, I'll vote yes then. I don't see anything wrong with my memory. All right.
Just a reminder, Mr. Chair, since we do have a quorum for the planning commission to take any action tonight, you need a vote of four at least.
Okay.
So, a three-two vote, while it would seem like it would be approval, it would be not passed because you need at least four when you only have a quorum of five.
That's right. Got it. All right. First three items on the agenda are UR 2308, 11, and 12.
Mr. Chairman, let's get the number three. It's a very brief one, but...
I'm sorry.
Yep. So, we do have in our bylaws an annual meeting for public participation. This time, we just want to confirm what that date is. Next month is a relatively short agenda, so we propose October, the next meeting, and that'll be our annual public participation portion for any topic. Anyone from the public can come, just talk about anything.
Okay. Does anybody have an issue with that?
No.
Do you need a motion for that?
I don't know if we do or not, but would y'all mind making one just in case?
Sure. Do I have a motion to have our next meeting be the public agenda?
I so agree.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Now, back to UR 2308, 11, and 12 of MediaCom Utility Reviews for some Mary Coaxal Cable.
Okay. I'm going to go through these two. There's three cases. I'm going to loop those all in at once. If you want to vote on them, we will have to vote on them individually, but for the purpose of this, we have seen these in our meeting before two months ago. That's why I'm kind of rushing for anyone else in the audience. This is for River Horse, Tracery. Now, we did not see the plans for Trentino, but we did discuss it. And the conversation then was the physical appearance and the numbers of a lot of the pedestals and other equipment that is in our roadways and public streets. It's a need. I mean, we highly support the technology. It allows people to work from home, but we have a lot of companies. Y'all are seeing a lot of these lately and just want to make sure we are being as efficient as possible. We have not seen revised plans since the meeting two months ago. There are representatives of MediaCom here. We were just informed we do need to act this month. So, a proposal that I would make is staff, if you so choose to, you obviously can recommend complete approval or denial. If you choose to make a recommendation or approve it with the conditions, that you condition it that we get those revised plans before we release the construction permits.
Yeah, because they seemed willing to revise the plans.
They did, but we didn't see those.
And maybe that was just some communication, and I think we'll let, before any motion is passed, I think it's a good opportunity for MediaCom to speak to that, see if they're willing to work with us on getting those revised plans, or would like to voluntarily table this till next month. I think that's another option. So, I'll kind of yield the mic, and if y'all want to give MediaCom a chance to speak to that. That'll be great. Hey, how are you?
Good. How you doing?
Good thanks.
Yes, ma'am. We just had a miscommunication on our part. It was two other folks from MediaCom that were here at the meeting two months ago, and we had talked about it, but I wasn't aware that it was a necessity. We can revise the plans and get them to you this month.
My suggestion would be that you just let us do an approval subject to the revised plans. Normally, those are staff issues anyway, even though we do have some concerns about the looks, but that way you wouldn't have to come back here. It would just save some time, and the staff's ultimately who gives the input on much of these 1152 elevens anyway.
Okay.
So, just to, my memory of the discussion was that there was an ability to revise the plans to reduce the quantity of these, and perhaps in Trentino, there were some areas where they might be behind the houses. Is that correct? Just to be specific about what we're looking for.
They were to be hidden.
Let me back up real quick, just for the record. Would you say it's your name and address?
I'm Brandon Johansson, construction manager for MediaCom. My address?
Hmm?
Home address, 1203 Harrison Avenue, Gulf Coast.
Are you saying your business address either way?
1613 Nantahala Beach Road, Gulf Coast.
Just protocol. We're not going to be...
That's required by the state.
So, I think your recollection is accurate. That was reducing the number, and Trentino was pretty unique. And maybe the third aspect of that is seeing where exactly the existing equipment is from other utilities and try to locate in the same vicinity. I think that was the three general pieces of guidance that were given.
I do have the plans for Trentino. Nothing's in the rear eaves on our back alley on my plans.
Okay. And we'll take a look at that. We haven't been out, but right away, we'll, if you so choose, to approve it with that condition.
Okay. All right.
Anything else? I don't think so. Y'all have anything else for me?
I don't think so. Thank you so much for being here. All right, Commissioners, I'll need three motions since these are three items.
I'll make a motion to, with staff's recommendations, approval of UR 2308.
Subject to plans being presented.
Is that with the staff's recommendation and approval?
Well, that's not...
We actually...
There's not a staff recommendation that says that.
Yeah, we usually have that on the screen, but we don't have that. So, if I may suggest, the motion read...
With new revised plans?
Revised plans before issuance of construction permits.
Okay, new revised plans before issue of...
Construction permits.
Construction permits.
I have a motion to approve, subject to new revised plans prior to construction permits being given. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Just, please amend that motion to also include staff recommendation, our standard two-page list of things.
Okay, amend that motion with staff recommendations as well as the new approved plans.
Does that include the second?
Second.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve, subject to updated plans being presented to the staff prior to permits and the other staff recommendations. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Do we have to say that again for the next time, or...
Please.
All right. Do you want to go for it again?
Do I do the next one?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve UR 2311 with staff recommendations and pending revised plans.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, UR 2312, do I have a motion?
I move we approve UR 2312, subject to staff recommendations and revised plans being presented to the planning department before permits are issued.
All right. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, all three motions pass unanimously. Thank y'all for coming to the meeting. Next item on the agenda, SD 2317, public hearing to consider the request of Dewberry Engineers, acting behalf of D.R. Horton, for a final plat for Laurel Brook, Phase One.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to excuse myself for this discussion.
Okay.
Good evening. Mike Jeffries, City of Fairhope Planning Manager. So, the owner is D.R. Horton. Engineer applicant is Dewberry Engineers. This application is for Phase One of a 51-lot subdivision located on the east side of Highway 181, just north of County Road 24. Subject property is outside of the City of Fairhope's municipal limits. Property received a village subdivision approval, case SD 20.43, September of 2020, preliminary plat approval. SD 20.52, at the February 2021 Planning Commission meeting. A 12-month extension was granted at the January 5th meeting of this year, and that's just a little bit of history for the property. On the screen, the left of the zoning map, and on the right is a copy image of the aerial. We have the site plan or the plat and the data table blown up for reference if we need to come back to this. This is an illustration given to us during the preliminary reviews of what the property would look like. Again, kind of some of the illustrations done, some of the fitness areas, treehouse, fire pit, and trailhead. On the screen, we'll get into this a little bit of detail in a comment later on, but this is a tree mitigation plan for some areas that were mistakenly cleared out. Construction of Phase Two, if you drove out there, you'll see kind of on the further east end, that is Phase Two. It's under construction, is getting close to completing, but the two components were being done almost simultaneously. Phase Two will be coming to us shortly. Baldwin EMC is the power provider. Fairhope is water and sewer. The lift station pumps are being redone. They did not quite meet the City of Fairhope specifications. Once installed, I'll let the engineer speak to the specifics of the timeline, but it should be in the near future, within the next week or so. Fairhope Utilities will go out, inspect those pumps, test them, and ensure that they are working as designed. Malt trails been provided through the common areas. There was the accidental removal of the 75-inch oak tree. You guys have looked at that, discussed that. We had a review of that after it was done, and a mitigation for some additional live oak trees that were planted. The site is 90% vegetated. The area of common area originally proposed to be undisturbed was inadvertently cleared. Included in your staff packet was that proposed mitigation plan, which included over 100 lob lolly pines, some grape myrtles. The live oaks were shown on there. That was part of the mitigation for the large oak tree that was removed. They also went in afterwards and installed some more shrubs and some bushes throughout that area as well, and sotted that to get that complete stabilization of the site that they were battling. We may want to look at how those trees are bonded, unlike typical street trees, that we do have that maintenance period on those. The work in the common areas for landscaping area, we don't have a bond type for that. Potentially, during the meeting, if the owner, D.R. Horton, you know, is committing to the health of those trees, that may suffice for us to rely on if some of those trees do not survive of having those replanted in the future. We were provided with invoices for the streetlights, the exercise fitness equipment, and fish to stock the pond. Can't stock the pond till the aerators are done, is what was told by us from the fish experts. Otherwise, the dirty water will just kill the fish, but that will be happening. A current aerial of the site showing the sodded area in the middle, complete sodded around the pond, and the vegetation around all of the lots. I've got a couple pictures just of the area that has been mitigated. You can see the grass in between. Those are the lob lolly pines. If you look close, you can see some of the bushes are turning brown. That could be from transplant shock. It's kind of a little early to tell now. This is a view looking back from the east side, capturing the treehouse and looking back towards the entrance. This is an image of the treehouse itself. That's a 10-inch live oak planted in the middle that the decking and treehouse components were constructed around. The staff report had mentioned that the slide had not been put in. As of this meeting, the slide has been installed. Mentioned there's a detention area located on the north side. Didn't have any screening, so staff is recommending some additional screening and landscaping be provided around that detention pond. There was some stabilization issues with that. They actually went through with a thick synthetic mat that is essentially bolted into the dirt, sprayed with a hydro seed, and has already gotten a significant amount of growth in that area. Small punch list, a lot of these are waiting on either power from utilities, but the lift station we talked about for compliance, the aerator will be stalled once it has final power. The screening added to the retention pond, approved by the planning director. Maintain the trail, provided trail maintenance, add a general note for a blanking easement over all common areas to the plat. The lift station parcel, just a note, needs to be a numbered lot, deeded to the City of Fairhope, and confirmation from ALDOT that all improvements in the right of way have been completed to their satisfaction. Follow-up activities, these are notes for the applicant for our maintenance and guarantee agreement. And staff's recommendation, you'll see an altered number three recommendation, different from what was in the original staff report, but we do recommend conditional approval of SD 23.17 Laurel Brook, Phase One, with the following conditions. One is to complete the punch list item listed above. Two is completion of the follow-up activities listed above. Three is a completed inspection report from the Baldwin County Building Department for the structural integrity of the treehouse. And four is a solution for the landscape mitigation and maintenance area that we talked about in the middle of the development. So, a little explanation on that condition number three is during our inspection, doing walk in the site, the treehouse was altered for the slide location, and some of the handrails weren't secure into it, so it was just a noted safety violation. Staff is happy to contact Baldwin County Highway Department to see if what they have done, what they have been out there. The applicant may have some more insight on the building of that, but with the unsafe conditions we were witness out there, we couldn't overlook that. And then the item four on the list is kind of, what are your thoughts on the landscape and how do we ensure that those common area trees for the mitigation aren't dead in six to eight months, and then we're left with nothing out there in the area that was to be undisturbed? But that is the conditions that we have, and on behalf of staff, I'll be happy to answer any questions. We have Justin Britt with Dewberry, the engineer of record this evening, and we have Taylor representative for D.R. Horton tonight as well. Be happy to entertain any questions that you may have on behalf of staff.
Okay. Any questions for staff at this time? Yes.
The landscape mitigation and maintenance, you said you don't, there isn't a format to do bonding on landscape?
Rebecca, let's let the...
Let them discuss.
Let the engineer come up and see if they have a solution.
Okay.
And then do the public hearing, and if that's not addressed, that's, I think...
That's fine.
The one thing we need to address. All right. Thank you, Mike. Does anybody on behalf of the engineer wish to speak? Thank you.
Justin Britt with Dewberry, 25353 Friendship Road. Not my personal. So, what do we want to talk about first?
Well, the only question I really have, I think the staff did a great job and covered everything. The one concern, you know, we have had a horrible drought this year. I made the mistake of planting about 20 fruit trees, and I've been getting a good suntan, holding a hose on those things every couple days. But what plans do y'all have as far as keeping the mitigated trees alive and bushes in that area as far as water goes?
So, Mike, I know you mentioned there's no really format to bond this stuff, but if the owner is to say publicly that they plan on keeping these alive for the link that it is theirs, will that suffice? I mean, they're not going to sell homes with a bunch of dead trees laying around.
Well, I mean, not to put too fine a point on it, but there's, I have very, they also, they accidentally cut down a 75-inch oak tree, so there's very little trust in their ability to manage a landscape.
Well, those are contractors, so it wasn't the owner.
I understand that, but, I mean, I assume the owner isn't also standing there with a hose. Somebody is contracted to maintain the oak trees.
Of course.
It's a, that's a pretty big boo-boo, and I understand it hurts them too. I mean, that treehouse is not what it could have been.
Has Phase Two been brought to us yet?
No. So, here's, there's a nuance here. We will see Phase Two.
I think relatively soon.
Next month.
Okay. Typically, we would have ways to mitigate this. With the jurisdictional changes, this is not in any building jurisdiction. So, when we get through with this case, the only thing we have lingering is a maintenance bond, but that's just for some utilities, not roads. Everything else is Baldwin County. Permits for the buildings will be Baldwin County, so we can't hold up COs. We can't do anything, we can't tie it into our existing maintenance bond. And a performance bond is not appropriate because they've been installed. So, there are other places that have come up with things like just a simple warranty bond, not a maintenance. You know, if that's willing to do, I guess we can be, as the planning commission, a custodian of that bond.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can ride a bond now. I think we're probably the point that we just have to unfortunately just, you know, trust that, you know, I'd love to tie it over into Phase Two, but if Phase Two is at the county, I think all we can just say is, look, you know, the lots will be worth more if it looks nicer than, if it looks more attractive, if not, they'll be worth less, but...
Well, I think the representative committing on their, you know, at least publicly committing on their commitment certainly helps. Probably won't be the last time we work with them, so...
Could the homeowners go after them? Because I would think if you're buying there, I mean, is there a way to have that commitment enforced by the homeowners, by the potential buyers as well who expect that landscape to be there?
I think anything that is stated in a public meeting has some, whether that would hold up in a...
It's not going to hold up.
It's not in your HMA.
There's not anything, the developer after the developers resign from the development.
But if they, if they stated in their meeting, I think, you know, to the City of Fairhope, the City of Fairhope may have...
The City of Fairhope can have something, but not the homeowners.
Right. What I'm saying, if they stayed in the meeting that they'll, you know, water them and replace the ones that die, then I think, you know...
And that's really what we're looking at. It's mitigation for things that were moved. We just want to make sure those are actually going to live, not just plant one time and walk away. I don't think that's the intent, but I don't think it's a bad idea, though.
Yeah, well, it's a tough time to plant stuff this time of year, anyway. Another two months is a lot better. So, all right. Any other questions for the developer this time?
Well, I was going to say, with even the verbal, verbal commitment, there needs to be at least a time limit on not 50 years of it being, we're looking for these to live. You know, kind of our street trees, our subdivision regulations do have that our street trees that are planted are covered under a two-year maintenance period from the time that they're planted, our responsibility.
That's a reasonable time to establish a tree.
It would be similar to our maintenance agreement. That is not for the trees, but it has that two-year window with it as well, so it could be looked at at some time.
So, Representative, are you okay with making that stance?
Yeah, we're good with it. Like Justin said, I mean, you sell more houses when it looks good. We spent a ton of money on this, and it's wasted if we just let it all die and move on. I don't think it helps anybody in that situation, so our goal is to keep it looking good. It helps us, just like it helps y'all and everybody else. Taylor Hensler, personal address, I don't, my work address is 103 Spanish Fort Center.
All right. And you're with Dewberry also?
I'm with D.R. Horton.
D.R. Horton, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions for the developers at this time?
Oh, and on the treehouse, we've already looked at that. We've got, we're having it reinforced and starting it up a little bit more, too.
I'm just curious, since we don't do any of the permitting now with the jurisdiction, does Baldwin County require permits for that kind of structure? Do they come out and inspect that?
I'm sure they, I'm sure they do, yeah.
Because that was the whole address thing.
Well, I know we got a, there's a permit in for the here, but not this structure. So, I think the proposal Mike made, let us just make sure Baldwin County is doing their inspection. We've got a playhouse that's got some elevation to it. Want to make sure kids are safe.
Exactly. Yep.
All right. Sounds good. Any other questions for the developer? Hey, thank y'all very much for being here. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Excuse me. Comments on items that haven't been discussed yet?
No, the public hearing that I opened is for this particular item. It's for Laurel Brook, Phase One on 181. Which are you here for?
Next.
Okay, that'll be the next one coming up, and that one will have a public hearing as well, so... All right, Commissioners?
I move we approve SD 23.17, subject to staff conditions listed, 1 through 4.
Okay.
With the new number three?
Well, with the new number three, are they...
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a rezoning. So far, the items that we have dealt with are utility and subdivision, and those, we actually have a vote, and we vote those one way or the other. On zonings, we'll have a vote, and our vote will be a recommendation to city council because zonings are ordinances, and only the city council has the ability to change an ordinance. So, at the end of this, this will be, look exactly like everything we've done so far. The structure that we'll go, we'll have the presentation, and then we'll have a public hearing, and then at that time, we'll close the public hearing, and we will have a vote. The only difference is the nuance will be, our vote will be to recommend to city council to whatever the recommendation happens to be. All right. Thank you.
And there will be follow-up, two meetings at city council.
Yeah.
Correct. And the city council will advertise it, and they'll have it on their, they'll have it on their agenda, both for the work session and the meeting.
Okay. So, this one is for 491 Pine Avenue. It's a rezoning request to go from B4 to B3A. So, the applicant is Ryan Baker, which is here, and it's on behalf of the owners, which is Fairhope Single Tax, and Philip and Michelle Godwin, and they request the subject property be rezoned from B4 Business and Professional District to B3A, which is the tourist resort lodging district. It's approximately 0.15 acres and is located at 491 Pine Avenue. They desire to utilize the subject property as a short-term rental, which is actually allowed in B3A, and there is the castle that we're all familiar with, which is north, although not directly adjacent, so it's within the vicinity of that type of use. It backs up to the city-owned property that's part of the Calhoun-Pen Creek watershed in the basin for the Big Mouth Gully. And as far as staff is aware, there are no immediate plans for any redevelopment. So, that's what it looks like. You can see it's just outside of...
Not the Calhoun-Pen Creek watershed.
I was wondering about that.
Oh, that's what, oh, that's what...
It's a gully.
Well, I asked Kim, and she said that.
No, let me bow.
Because it's the biggest one.
Bow to Charbonne, isn't it, Dan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, yeah, okay, that's, there you have it. Charcoal gully, that's right. We were just in it last week, so... But it's right outside the CBD. You guys can see that. That dotted line is the CBD. So, this way is the CBD. It's just right outside. It's Jason. And that is what it looks like. The owners are actually here, one of them, and they reside at 493 Pine Avenue, which is next door.
497. 493 is part of that...
Oh, okay, so that's 491 and 493. Then yours doesn't read 497 on the application, but that's okay. All right. So, the subject property was a condominium called the Rooshery, and the owners intend to keep the structure as a duplex, as is for the immediate future. And actually, B4 doesn't allow for duplexes, but B3A does, so this would bring this into compliance, the change in the zoning. So this is the use table amended. It's got the red, because I used the wrong one. That was my bad earlier, so that's why this is updated, that red part. And you can see that some, like a boarding house or dormitory is allowed by right, as is a bed and breakfast. And just to tell you the differentiation between B4 and B3, the business professional district is, the district is intended to provide opportunity for business establishments of a professional nature and is restricted to offices and businesses, which provide specific corporate functions or professional services to the general public. So what they want to change it to is the B3A tourist resort lodging district, and it's intended to provide commercial and resort areas at appropriate locations to serve the needs of tourists visiting the bay beaches and related recreational and cultural attractions. So commercial activities restricted to restaurants, which are attached to or an integral part of the complex, are permitted. So staff recommends approval of zoning case 2304.
Now, one clarification, restaurants have to be approved by the Board of Adjustments, correct? They're not a by right, are they?
They have to, aren't they, I think they're conditional, based on the people living next door, and that's a bed and breakfast. So restaurant is conditional, yes, B3A.
And I think that, really, the only question we had here, as y'all know, the, I think the ultimate request at this time was to be able to use this two-unit duplex as a short-term rental, which it's outside the CBD, it's on B4. That prohibits short-term rentals. So that's what the request was, but any zoning request, we have to take a look at every other use that's allowed.
Capable use, yeah.
And, and I think everything has either a, most of the things that we saw, thought might be a problem there, being on the edge of the CBD, has a secondary review. There is one or two that's unlikely, based on the size of the property, that is a by right, but staff will review it and be pretty critical of anything posed there that, what doesn't fit.
I don't have a problem with this at all. I love the idea, and you know, my feelings of, of how important it is to have short-term rentals, and I want them everywhere, and you know that. I've got, though, from past issues, you know, we had a lawsuit there recently with some concerns about setbacks, where people tried to say, oh, this is residential use, et cetera, et cetera. Are there any major setback changes between the B3B and the B4, number one? And number two, that would not be considered a spot zoning, since it's, I mean, it's pretty close to the castle and those items, but it is surrounded by B4.
Yeah. It, it, that's a good question, and way we kind of looked at, there is at least an initiative of B3A in here that might have been a B, and, you know, for the short-term rental on this cusp of the CBD.
Well, that's all a hodgepodge. That whole area is a hodgepodge.
It is. And there's some things in there that's been proposed, I think it's not on this street, but very close by that was proposed at B2. We recommend not.
Denial, that's right.
So I think there is a B3A in the general vicinity, and it, it seems in this case to be something where we don't see too much of a problem with. There is slight differences in setbacks, but there's neither setbacks on the, the commercial on the side. There's actually a little bit of a, less allowance, I think, in the rear.
Yeah, right.
So.
You know, I mean, to me, the less, less office and the more, you know, short-term we have in that central business district, I think the better off we are as a municipality.
And, and we did go back, I don't think anyone on staff was here, the last two times, the boundaries of the central business district were amended, but, because one of the questions was, can we just amend the central business district? That would allow short-term rentals as well. The, the historic conversations were, we want to keep a little bit of a buffer from some of the most intense uses as we approach that, the gully, both for the noise across the gully, protection of the gully, so we're not, we're not putting a lot of the real, more intense uses. So I, I think we have future reviews for anything that may propose something.
And last question, the Pine Street rehab becoming one-way, that's gonna end at Bancroft, isn't it? It's not, they're not gonna, I mean, I know they wouldn't take it one way across, but they're not gonna redo the parking and sidewalks on the other side, are they?
There's nothing going on down here. The proposal there, which there's no plan, but there, no, it would not cross, it is proposed, it's not crossing Bancroft. There's some drainage right at the end of this street that kind of, that ends, some drainage, and drop off.
Yeah. Drop off. Into the gully.
Large drain.
All right. Any other questions for staff at this time?
I was confused by the mention of bed and breakfast, and that's, I just, like, short-term rental was, sounded fine with the two condos, but the.
Oh, that was just kind of a hypothetical of, yeah.
Well, and, and, but that is a use.
It's a whole different ballgame, though.
So, but let's be clear, the use table has what uses it can be. It can be a duplex, it can be a bed and breakfast, it can be a hotel.
But those buildings couldn't be a bed and breakfast.
It can be a single-family residence. The other section of our ordinance on short-term rentals allows any of those buildings, physical structures, to be utilized as a, something you rent less than 30 days.
Yeah.
So, it could be a bed and breakfast, but that would require a live-in.
Yeah.
Well, and it could. Remember, Rebecca, though, we're not talking about the building. That building could be bulldozed tomorrow.
That's why I was confused.
We're talking about a zoning that's going on until it's changed again the next hundred years, which is one thing we always have to remember, because I love the idea that this is a short-term rental. It's a restaurant without streetlights, sidewalks, parking, you know, I think it would be a nightmare.
And they'd have to have a change of use if they, if somebody, there's another stopgap.
They'd have to have a change of use, and hopefully people would be smart enough to recognize that, but you know, we had a change of use come in, and people backing off of gravel right there on the Mobile Avenue with the hill and the curve. So you never know what'll happen, but, but just remember, we're making the zoning change for.
I just wanted to clarify, since it was brought up.
Yeah.
But it's, it's good questions.
Yeah.
We have to think, you know, what may be.
It's in the half report.
And that, that's the, we have other reviews, either this board, the Board of Adjustment, you know, somebody can go in and say, okay, we want to turn that two in into four in. Well, that comes in as MOP review.
Yeah.
That's gonna require all you, infrastructure improvements and things, so we, there are many ways that anything could come in, so.
All right. Any other questions for staff at this time?
I just have one. Lee, I don't know if you remember, but we had had discussions over the previous years about extending our CBD and having an overlap of that. Has there, has there anything overcome of that? So to prepare for the growth of what, how we're gonna do that.
In this area, there has never been a consensus on, on expand. There's not a whole lot of properties here against the gully.
I think they were talking more on north of Fairhope, near the post office, that way, and south to pass Royal Park.
So, that's a, that's a good conversation that we'll be happy to put on the agenda for old new business and talk about next month, but.
Well, I just know that this will keep coming up, the rezoning.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to speak on behalf of the developer on this?
I'm Ryan Baker, 1 South School Street, Fairhope, this office address. I'm all kinds of renowned, and this, Philip Goodwin's here to, to talk about the property project. We did a pretty good job describing how we all got to this point. Bought the, has the house next door, bought this house duplex next door to it, and just wanted to be able to do short-term rentals. We explored CBD options, because there's only three properties that are there that are not part of the CBD. We thought it was really weird. We decided not to go down that whole long route.
You know, we might not just say that, you're gonna start to rumor that that's gonna be a CBD store over there.
We decided not to go down that long route, so we decided to, this is, we thought was the easiest path was to go, there's, B2 is directly across the street on the south side, which wasn't on that map up there, so it already is a hodgepodge of zoning, if you will, in that spot, so that's also part of what we discussed about allowing for this particular zoning, and is the least, we decided not to go to B2, because it opened up a whole lot more options for uses. It is a small parcel, be hard to do mixed use, a restaurant, any of those kinds of things on that parcel. We talked a whole lot about that with staff along the way, and really, the whole goal is just to be able to take the current duplex and turn it to short-term rental when needed. It's not even necessarily that's what they're kind of doing, I mean, ultimately, it's just, just wanted to be able to open up that option.
Yeah, so, speak on, on that behalf, really. Philip Goodwin, 497 Pine. My wife's from Fairhope originally, so that was a condition of our marriage, we're retiring coming down here. So, we bought 497, and he's done a lovely job of redesigning what we want to do, but we share an easement, which is owned by 497, it's on its property, it's a 15-foot easement between the two properties. So by buying this, we can, our plan is kind of to redevelop behind it, I shouldn't say redevelop, re-landscape behind it, removing and changing the drive and the parking, and I'll make it more of a really high-end kind of nick, nook, or hideaway for somebody to be able to stay for a short-term kind of thing. And that way, also building a landscaping separation between that building and ours, and controlling it. And so that is, that is the genesis of all of this, and why we're here to get it and write that. So we're not planning to inadvertently cut down any oak trees or tear down any houses, so.
All right, well, thank you so much. Any questions for the developer at this time? All right, thank you, sir. I will go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak?
These are good people who will take good care of the property and do it right. Oh, Dean Moser, 456 Oak Avenue.
Just say Dean Moser, the castle.
Everybody knows that. Come down.
Thank you, Dean. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? All right. All right, sir, this is, if this, if you want to speak to this item, this is, oh, the next one, never mind, I'm wrong. All right, in that case, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And commissioners, do I have a motion?
I move, we recommend the city council approval of ZC 23.17.
I've got a motion for a recommendation, recommendation of approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to recommend approving to city council. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, ZC 2305, Hilltop.
Okay. You'll see some red lines here. We just wanted to make some clarifications. I think we got some questions. And, and ultimately, this is a Hilltop PUD amendment. If, just a little background, this came in, it was originally a county subdivision, two phases, and final-platted, well, it was county, and then we did annex in as a PUD. It received a, the PUD approval, and Lot 29, honestly, I think it was just a carryover, one of those statements, but it's explicitly stated in the approved PUD that the setback, front setback is 100 feet from the center line of Section Street. That's pretty much a county regulation, it's a highway construction setback. So that's the main reason we're here. I'm gonna, it was, it was advertised as 30 feet, or 20 feet in one case, but I'm, I'm gonna clarify that as we go away. What I'll briefly tell you is the request was to change that 100-foot to a 20-foot front setback. The staff had a conversation, and we, we agree that 30 feet is more appropriate. The applicant has agreed with that, I believe, so we'll show you.
30 feet from where?
From the front property line, not the center line of. So, and, and as you'll see in just a moment, that aligns with the setbacks on the properties to the south, it's part of the RSA project, was it one of the RSA phases? So I'm gonna brief, brief through here, this is, triangle is the lot in question, Lot 29 of Phase One, that was originally part of Phase One of Hilltop Subdivision. And again, the request was to change the front setback as written in the, the PUD. And then the language, these two paragraphs were also requested to be added, with a question, with the exception of that 20-foot setback, staff doesn't have a problem with that. Instead of reading all this, the, the big change this makes in defining height of the building, they proposed to use kind of the old way of doing it, where we measure from the front, where the front setback line is, because the lot kind of drops off. If y'all recall, this lot drops off, and there's even area of drainage and wetlands, so to, to kind of utilize the front, and, and we don't have a problem with that, as long as we know what that is on the front end, or, we didn't see a problem, but on the left is what was originally platted as a highway construction setback. That's the 100 feet from the center line of Section Street. On the right, you can see an aerial, and just to the south, this is 30 feet, so what we're recommending is to align with that same setback. So there's some positives, that's one, is the aesthetic and maybe subjective of pushing it closer to the, the sidewalk, I think that's what the applicant talked about, but one thing we really noticed is, if you look at these contours, it gives a chance to push to a little flatter area and not be, be back closer to the, I think, getting closer to that detention area and wetlands and, and everything at that bottom.
What is the max effect on the feet from?
Um, I, I, you know, and I, I was, actually, that was on my list to do, it's not that much. It's about 20 feet net, but we didn't have accurate measurements on, based on the aerials, so I don't want to speculate. I'd say approximately 20 feet net.
The drop, is that what you were asking?
Nothing, setback changes.
Oh, oh.
There's a, there's a 70-foot difference between the numbers, but in effect, you're talking about a, one measured from the center line, one measured from the front property line. So net 20 to 30 feet is a, is an approximate guess. This is a proposed plan that was, was submitted to how this might lay out. We're not approving this exact plan. I will, I'm gonna point out something here, we did receive some comments, I'm gonna speak to that in just a moment, but while we have this plan up, we are not looking at landscape plans and things like that in this detail. This would require further landscaping and buffering, that 10 feet's required to produce that, but there's very specifics now that are in the city limits to fill in that buffer. Just want to mention that now, but that's not something we are reviewing at this time. There were a couple of renderings provided to, to kind of show, and I'd really ask you to focus more on the massing here, not necessarily, this isn't a final architectural plan, but massing of what that looks like, and I believe this was drawn at 20 feet, not the 30 feet we proposed. So with this said, staff does recommend approval for this case. I've amended our recommendation to clarify, so it is to amend the front setback for Lot 29 from 100 feet as measured from the center line of Section Street to 30 feet as measured from the property line, and add the two proposed paragraphs clarifying the intent of Lot 29. Now, before I.
And this is a change of the PUD itself, not the subdivision of the PUD, so this goes to city council, correct?
That is correct. And before I yield the mic, I do want to address just real quick, I think we have some, some good thoughts, and where there's been some good comments, but I do want to just bring up, you know, the preliminary plat was first approved in July of 2019. That created Lot 20, 2000, that created Lot 29. That time, everything was unzoned, no rule, no rules on uses. It was final-platted in August of 2020, and that was in, in the county, an unzoned area. Final-platted, became a lot in August of 2020. And then in November of '21, it was here, we discussed the P, original PED that confirmed the uses in the PUD, and then went twice to the city council in December 13th and '22. Some of the comments in the letters, I really am, I think some folks purchased the house in 2021. A lot of these things were decided before that was purchased. We're not here discussing a use, that is already defined. So we're here talking about a setback, and if there's anything else we can facilitate, I think, but on this, and as proposed in this amendment, there's nothing that addresses the use. That's water under the bridge. The, the paragraph you read in there for commercial, residential, or mixed, is just a supplement to what's already in there that lists a very specific group of uses in the current PUD. So we're not replacing those, it's just adding that language. So just wanted to, to clarify that, so that we, we can kind of focus on the things that may, we may be able to answer tonight.
Thank you, Hunter. Would anybody like to speak on behalf of the developer, Trey?
Good evening. Trey Genright, Jake Consulting, 208 Reno Road. Thank you, Hunter, for the introduction. So as you, as you mentioned, this project requi- So, as you, as you mentioned, this project request is simply to reduce that setback from 100 feet off the center line down to what we've agreed to as a 30-foot front setback off the road.
Do you know what the net sum difference is by any chance?
He's, he's pretty close to it. I think that that right-of-way is 50 feet, it's probably closer to the 20 or 30-foot difference. What we're trying to do is pull it off of the waterway in the back, and then it gives us some more flexibility to place the building along the highway. Furthermore, I personally see this as an entryway coming into the downtown area. I think it's important that we kind of set a cornerstone for this area. The idea is that to make it have more of a 38 feel, so that when we brought the PUD before the city a few years ago, we restricted the uses pretty heavily on what we could and couldn't do there. It's really just neighborhood use-type facilities. With this reduction in the setback, we agreed to actually add some architectural standards to it, and so the idea was there to actually describe what that structure would look like. And so, although the city doesn't necessarily have architectural standards in your business guidelines, or in the PUD in itself, we felt that it would be a good idea to add that to here, so we added, so that the structures have a residential scale and feel. And so, the idea of that rendered you saw there was to show you what the intent would be. The PUD in itself, as it currently states, requires that the landscaping plans meet city standards, and any buffers would be required based on the uses, and whenever those uses would come before the city planning commission at a later date. And so, depending on what the use finally sets in at, that would describe what the buffer width would be, and then it would address, I think, some of the concerns that the neighbors have had there. So, again, this is to add architectural standards that were not in there before, and then allow the buildings to move forward, and sit at a closer depth of the right-of-way, which is a more pedestrian-scale structure. And then, it also forces parking to be either on the side or to the rear of the structure, so the parking cannot be out in front, which I think is a win-win. So, with that being said, I appreciate your time, and any questions you may have.
Any questions for the developer at this time? All right, thank you, sir. In that case, I go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir.
Kendall Douglas, 147 Hyacinth. I'm a lifelong resident of Fairhope, and moved back about two years ago. And for timing-wise, we actually put an offer in on the house before the PUD was approved, but it wasn't yet completed, and so we had to wait until it was completed to close. And once it was completed, we closed, but we obviously didn't get any notifications on that, because we did not yet live there. And so, it wasn't until we received the zoning request for this change on the 24th of August that we knew there was any change to the zoning of that lot. We've actually met with Mr. Tickle since then, he was wonderful to sit down and talk with us. We're actually here to ask, or to agree with the change in the setback line, because it does move the, the structure further, a little further forward away from our homes. We do still have some concerns about the noise as there's going, the current setbacks put a parking lot 10 feet from our property line, which the property line is really only 20 feet from the house anyway. And there are some plans for a nice green barrier, but I don't know how well that's going to change the noise component to it. And I didn't know, you know, we had to deal with this on a very compressed timeline, since the, we got the letter on the 24th, and the proposal that was submitted to the commission only posted on Friday before Labor Day weekend, so we've had three days to kind of process this. And I don't know whether we have any options as far as moving that setback on the southern portion of the lot any further or not, whether working with y'all, or working with Mr. Tickle, or in his development company.
Will this come back, excuse me, will this come back to a site plan review?
Probably not site plan review, unless it is a, the only thing that would maybe trigger is if the height on a mixed use, but they could do residential, they could do commercial. If it's three or more units, we'll come back as MOP. So, this could be, once it gets through city council, could just be a setback overall, or it could be most of the other, I really don't know, it's not. Now, I want to make, point out, though, that a setback being moved wouldn't change anything, that's a building setback. The building's way off the property line, so just moving a setback is just about the building. The building's probably 80 feet off the south property line, as currently proposed. I think the parking lot is actually much softer, and what that does, there's actually an environmental, when you move, if you move that back, move it north, there's a lot more grading in that lower area to get the parking lot level. So, I think if you look at the contour map on the plan, it's kind of a least invasive location, and also the aesthetic of having a parking lot on the front road. So, buildings, changing the building setback, I don't think would impact.
Well, I understand, I was just wondering if that concern that they had would be looked at in the future.
Maybe. Is the only concern you have right now?
So, we don't know whether or not we'll, we'll have any other options.
If it doesn't come back to us, it's probably, the odds are, if it's something you wouldn't like, it'll probably come back to us. If it's something that you would like, it probably won't, because the larger the mass is, and the more individual units that are there, usually the triggers that bring it to us.
But there is two more, there's another, one more public hearing when it reaches the city council, we have to, so that'll, I can't tell you what they think it'll be.
But it will be going before the city council as well? Okay. And now, so, yeah, we would, we would like to, you know, speak in support of moving the setback, because it does move some of the, what would be the commercial space a little further from our homes, and gives us a little more privacy.
Sure.
And it's still the parking lot issue, particularly with the noise of a gravel parking lot 30 feet from our back door, that raises, that brings us some concerns, and I've, in fairness to Jay Developing and Mr. Tickle, I've not gotten a chance to talk with them about the, on a follow-up after our initial meeting, so they've not gotten a chance to speak with us on those concerns either.
And I do want to just call out, you know, this was unzoned before anyone moved in next door. This could have been anything.
Yeah.
And I think what we did within this PUD, as I think Trey mentioned, this is a restricted small use that was voluntarily agreed to by the developer. So, I want to make sure that this could have been anything, building that's, I think there's no height limit in the county, and setbacks there. So, you know, while, while we've discussed this for now, four and a half years, and I think we've moved the needle, certainly if there's any opportunity to, to address the neighbors' uh-
Sure. All right, thank you. All right, anything else?
That'd be all. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening.
Hey, how are you?
I'm Jerry Coe, 151 Hyacinth in Fairhope. I live right next door to the Douglas's. So, I'm the middle home, there's three of us. Many comments that I would like to make are not appropriate, as you told me, we're not talking about anything except the, the offset, or wherever the building is placed. But I'd also like to ask if it could be closer up to the acute angle, you know?
Move to the north.
Yeah.
Move north.
Yes.
And this kind of cuts off the whole plan, but it is in your packet, there is more, more space to the north in the lot.
Where, where the angle is like this, the tiny acute angle, scoot it up that way as much as possible. But there is one other comment that I'd like to make. We love the trees, and that's what we love to look at. So, there's not a mistake, could we actually have ribbons tied around the trees that are to stay? I mean, let's avoid that problem of the, the huge oak being cut down. Silly, silly idea, but-
I'm going to step in. I don't think there's a development in this area that took better care of the trees through development than, than this one did. Just, not every developer, not every contractor's the same. Accidents do happen, but that is a requirement. Now that they're in the city, there will be tree protections around trees that are protected, there will be ribbons, and we will actually be able to oversee the construction to ensure that's done.
Good, you can come to my house, I'm right there, my backyard is right there. So, thank you for listening to me. If there is any other way that we can go to a meeting and make some comments, can you tell us where that would be?
I think what you need to do is just, I think you'll find that developers are pretty much ones that if I had somebody developing, I've been on this board for over 20 years, and if I had somebody doing a development next door to me, they're the ones I would want to do it, quite frankly.
Okay.
I think you're quite lucky, and like Hunter was saying, when you're originally out of the city limits, who knows what could happen, and you're not in that case now. We have, in the city limits, we have, you know, tree, you know, tree maps and so forth, and, but as far as, you know, he's got his private property rights to, you know, do with his property, what's, you know, legal for him to do, and I would suggest just making your comments known to him.
Okay.
And they generally work with people pretty well.
Okay, thank you. Because I'm brand-new at Fairhope, I mean, I moved-
What we do, once we finalize the schedule, that will be on the, we have to post the fully amended ordinance, has to run in the newspaper, so that will be publicly announced and on the city council agenda. So, if you'll start monitoring those-
Okay.
-in about a month from now, it'll at least take that long, and then it'll be on one of the next, probably November? One of the two meetings.
I like the suggestion you had, that we just talk with-
That'd be my suggestion, because most of the things the city council's going to look at, you know, they're not, they don't have the ability of the legal, you know, they can say yes or no on the 30-foot setback, and if they say no on it, you know, y'all are worse off than, than if they did not. So, I think, you know, y'all are in support of what they're doing for obvious reasons. So, there's really not a lot that I don't think you would accomplish, even following this to city council. I think the best thing to do would just be to talk to the developer and kind of-
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
See what you're doing. Thank you. All right, anybody else wish to speak to this item? In that case-
Yeah, I'd like to.
Yes, sir.
Frank Vitello, I'm a local real estate broker in the area, I've been here 22 years. I was involved in the sale, and the issue is with the RSA salespeople, not the developer. I've spoken to the developer, and he's very nice, he's met with the folks. My concern is some of the clients he's looking at putting in there. One of the clients is an exercise studio that's located here in town that has 250 clients a day, driving in, driving out of that parking lot, plus, you know, coffee shop and other, that's a lot of traffic going in and out of Section Street into that parking lot. I know he can do anything he wants with that property, and, but is there any kind of restriction can be put on the volume of traffic that'll be entering that-
I mean, we're talking about right now, the setback.
Right, I know that, but who would, who would that be involved with?
I think that, that horse is out of the barn.
Right, I understand that, that the ship has already left, based on 2019 agreement, when there was nothing there but woods, which is presently the RSA property. And so, all of that was decided then, but they should be able, something we should, we should be able to do at this point. I mean, this, this subdivision's popping up all over the place in Fairhope, and some of them are ill-conceived, and some of them, they come in and they clear-cut, and before the studio's chance to get out there and put the pink ribbons around the trees and so on, and, but there's, there's no restriction on, on the mixed PUD as far as the type of business.
There are restrictions, but it's in the PUD, and you can read that, but we're not getting into that now.
Right, I know you, I know you're just doing zoning now.
All we're doing now, if you have anything to say, we've got a, a executive session coming up, and anything you want to say about the setback is fine, you know?
Is there any?
But as far as the, the PUD goes, the PUD is written, and it's there already, and he's not asking for any amendments, he's got what he's got, so that's not, you know, in play here today.
No, the developer's been very nice about it and everything. When I saw the sign, I made, found out who owned the property, and made the call-
Sure.
-on behalf of my daughter, and to find out what's going on.
Right.
And then I found out that certain people were notified of this, but that, that never was conveyed, or things were said that weren't true. It's wetlands, and it can't be developed, and that sort of thing. So, I mean-
There's no wetlands on this lot?
There's a 50-foot setback on both sides of the dry stream.
Yes, sir. And if you notice on the parcel map, there's a big piece of property-
Hey, Hunter, Hunter-
Right, on the northern-
If there's not two with setback, we got that many guys, so.
The northern part of the-
All right.
That goes diagonally across.
Yeah, unfortunately, you're not, it's not the first time somebody's come up who said, well, my, you know, we were told that the neighboring property could, but, but that's, that wasn't true. And I, I don't know, that's sort of outside, out of our hands.
Yeah, that's a different ballgame, right.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a different case, right. I understand that.
And there are, I mean, the owner did voluntarily, you know, as we were saying, put, put restrictions on what they're able to develop.
Yeah, right, I've spoken to him, and he's been very forthright, and, and see if he's a man of his word, and so on, you know. But, okay, but thank you very much for the, for giving the time to put the input in.
Yes, sir.
My address, my office address is 20040, Highway 91.
One, just one-
Thank you very much, yes.
And, and talking with the developer, the owner, I mean, I had, I appreciate, this is just, I'll keep, I'll keep it short. I appreciate their desire to do gravel as a pervious surface, and a sort of fitting in with the land. You know, concern about the sound of gravel is something I hadn't thought about before, and that might be worth having a discussion about, is there another way to do something pervious, that's low-impact, that doesn't have, doesn't make noise?
And this, this proposed tenant opens at 5:00 a.m. and closes at 9:00. So, you have traffic, 5:00 a.m., the 9 o'clock behind your house. The 5:00 a.m. and the 9 o'clock is the issue, not in-between. You know?
All right.
Okay. And is that-
I mean, we're deciding right now whether to do a 30-foot setback or not.
I know.
Anything about that, you need to ask the staff. I mean, we talked about this for three and a half, for five hours, but at the end of the day, we're going to vote whether to change the setback to 30 feet, which y'all want, or not.
Right.
So, we-
I'll get together with Mike.
So, any, anything, you can read the ordinance, you can see what the uses are, but he's got those rights.
Right, I understand that.
We can't take him away from him.
Right.
So, you look at it, get an attorney, do whatever you want to do, but the bottom line is, I would suggest to talk to him, because he's the one that's going to decide what's going on.
Right.
He's got his, his private property rights already, so.
Yeah, they've had good conversations.
Right.
He's been very flexible with recommendations.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and turn the meeting back over to the, to the committee members. And committee members, if you don't have any more questions, I will entertain a motion.
I move, we recommend to the city council approval of case ZC 23.05, to amend the front setback for Lot 29 for 100 feet as measured from the center line of Section Street to 30 feet as measured from the property line, and add two proposed paragraphs clarifying the intent for Lot 29.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Chris?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, based on the agenda, it would be my recommendation for the planning commission to go into executive session pursuant to Alabama Code, Section 3625A-7, subsection A3, to discuss pending or potential litigation. I have submitted a declaration to include my opinion that the discussion would be subject to Alabama law, and I would make the request for the planning commission to take a motion and go into executive session at this time.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move we go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll probably be- We'll probably be in executive session till roughly 7:00 o'clock. When we come out, we'll close the meeting, but we will not do any more business at that time. All in favor to go into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.